This meeting is being recorded.
Hello, everyone. Hello and welcome to the June 22nd Planning Commission meeting. I would like to begin by doing a call to order and Camelia, because you were asking, alternate Commissioner Chow is on the line. Do you see his name now? He's waving.
Okay, I can take roll call.
Thank you.
All right, let's see here. Chair Boyle.
Here.
Vice Chair Brody.
Vice Chair Brody?
He was here. What happened?
I don't know.
He's coming back in.
Okay.
Okay, I'll skip over him for right now. Commissioner Chang.
Present.
Commissioner Dustin.
Here.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Kazuki.
Here.
And then alternate Commissioner Chow. And he's still logging on. I guess we can address the Commissioner Brody was here and he's having technical difficulties.
And I mean, we know he's logging on and has technical difficulties, but we also do have a quorum, including our alternates. So I think I'll move on, especially since he can probably get on while I do the introductory remarks. And so first, I just want to acknowledge all the commissioners present. Thank you so much for being here. And alternate Commissioner Chow, welcome to our group. It is very nice to have you on board and we look forward to, we look forward to hearing your input on your first meeting. So, welcome. I would like to acknowledge that the agenda was posted 72 hours in advance at the San Marino City Hall, the Public Library, the Recreation Department, as well as the San Marino website. Each commissioner has received the plans and staff comments and has reviewed every item on the agenda and visited each site. The general order for hearing each case will be as follows. Staff will discuss the case and provide background information and a recommendation. I will ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to comment on the proposal. The hearing will then be open to the public and I'll ask for comments for, against, or about the project. We'll take comments. There's always this line that we'll take comments from the in-person participants, but we all know that we'll, we will take comments just virtually. I will make a note here that all public comments that are not the applicant will be limited to three minutes. Please observe that time. In all cases, please come forward and give your name and address. When speaking on an item, please do not repeat comments previously made, but rather acknowledge agreement with previous speakers. However, please present any additional comments. At the conclusion of the public comments, the applicant will have a chance to respond and no further comments from the public will be accepted. I will then ask for comments from each of the commissioners. Most of the cases will involve variances, conditional use permits, and/or design review. The commission will discuss and act on each one individually. In each case, variances will be considered first, then conditional use permits, and finally, design review. If there is no motion for approval or denial, the planning commission has the option of continuing the application to a future meeting. In the event of a denial, it is hoped that the applicant will have heard comments during the public comment period and during deliberations that will be useful in resubmitting an application. It is important for the property owner to understand that once a project is approved by the commission, the drawings become legal documents. If any changes are made to the project subsequent to approval without obtaining proper approval of those changes, then the property owner is in fact breaking the law. There is a risk of having to change the project back to the originally approved design or paying a fine to the city of San Marino equal to the greater of 5% of the project valuation or $2,500 and then resubmitting the changes made to the project to the commission. It is important to understand that there is a 15-day appeal period after action has been taken for the applicant or any interested party to request the city council to review and act on the case. The commission will usually take items in the order shown on the agenda. Occasionally, it will take them out of order if there are a large number of people here on one item. That item may be taken ahead of others as a courtesy to those present. The commission will not start any new item after 11:00 PM. Items not heard will be carried over to the adjourned meeting or the next regular meeting. At this time, I would like to open for public comments of any item that is not on our current agenda. I do not see any and I'd like to have that confirmed by you, Camelia.
I believe you're back on.
You are Commissioner Brody, or I'm sorry, Vice Chair Brody. Thank you.
Um, yeah, so there is nothing in the chat and I have not received anything in the planning email for.
Okay. Thank you. So I guess with that, we will move to the first agenda item, Design Review Case Number DR21-14HP. And can we please have the staff report?
Yes. So for item number one, this is for 221 East California Boulevard. This project was last presented before the Planning Commission at the March 23rd, 2022 meeting. And I would like to highlight the main changes that have been revised on these new plans. First thing I would like to point out is that the description in the agenda is accurate as to the number of tree removals. The project is proposing to remove two heritage tree and one established tree. And it's also accurately reflected in L1 of the plans and L3 of the plans as part of Attachment 1. And the Arbus report, if you're only looking at the report itself, page number five of the Arbus report and page number six of the Arbus report, which indicates the correct amount of trees to be removed and then the ones that are going to be transplanted, as well as the required replacement trees, which are indicated in the tree replacement matrix and also on the proposed landscape plan. Besides the tree removals, the rest of the project, under the project history of the stock report, oh, staff has listed all the comments that the planning commission last requested to be addressed. And we have indicated how the applicant has, has or has not addressed them. Majority of the materials that the commission requested to be changed were such as having larger materials to the front and changing from stone to brick. The chimney, as well as making the chimney larger, having a bigger facial forge wood siding to the front and then or buttonboard inside to the front, as well as changing the main entrance for the residence. The rest of the changes, some were kept at the request of the applicant and the massing and the overall roof design has mostly stayed the same. And the comments below are the restrictions that the design can't change the current hit as proposed. The square footage has not changed on the project. Setbacks have. The front of the proposed residence has been pushed back and therefore the setbacks for the garage has also changed to reflect it. Other than that, staff is recommending approval for the project and we have updated the analysis table to reflect all the setback changes, as well as the plate height changes that the applicant proposed, which is a foot reduction in the first and second story each of the plate heights. I'm available to answer any questions and the applicant is also online to respond to any questions as well.
So sorry, I forgot I put myself on mute. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? No? Okay. So now I would like to ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to comment on the proposal.
I agree even in Commissioner Leo, I keep project architect. Thanks for your comments back on March 23rd. Those are comments really helped to improve the project. And just as the staff reports state, the main change are the more further set brown setback and the one foot lower of the plate high low for each floor. And also we have the some of the opening and the finished exterior finished material to be changed to match the Monterey Revival style. Oh, yeah, we appreciate your comment again and we will be appreciated if you can, you know, approve this project so that we can move on to the next stage. Thank you again. We are be available for any question you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Dustin.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a few questions here. Can you tell me what are you proposing as the roof element for the kitchen garden window?
Oh, that'll be the metal roof.
Copper, the same as the bay?
Yes, copper, yes.
And, and on the bay window and the garden roof, will that copper be treated in any way or will it be left to weather naturally?
Oh, would be done naturally, yeah.
And then on the landscape plan, can you just clarify for me? It looks like there are two trees in the planter bed up against the front of the house. Can you just confirm for me the species of those two trees?
Even the main, a major tree or the right front of the house, one is a California sycamore and the other one is a Japanese maple.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any, anyone else have questions for the applicant? Seeing none, and I don't have any either, I will now open it to public comment to see if there's anybody who would like to comment for, against, or about this project. Again, I'm seeing no one. Correct?
Yes, it does. I don't see anyone in the chat and I have not received any emails for comments.
Okay, thank you so much. So at this time, I am closing this from public comment or I'm closing the public comments and we will move forward with the Commissioner deliberation. Commissioner Wright, I, you were first on my list, so.
Well, I don't know that I'll be a good one to be first because I really like to hear from my fellow commissioners. I always appreciate when the applicant responds to our comments and this is no different. It's just, it's good to see and it's very helpful. I've struggled with this project because I, I do really well with the story polls and not to have any story polls is really sort of thrown me with and I'm driving by and going, what? And I understand, we heard the explanation, but that, so just understand when I say some of the things I say, that's, that's kind of hurt me a little bit. So I might like look to you, Commissioner Dustin, who's always helped me with plate heights versus square footage, because it's good that they've reduced the plate heights at least somewhat. I'm still not really happy with nine feet, but they haven't reduced the square footage and we know how I feel about maximum. I get very worried when we start allowing maximum because to me, that's the number one thing that really changes the character of a neighborhood. Obviously, if it fits in and everything's like that, then that's the issue and the problem. So for me, I'm still really struggling with that. I also think the balcony should be wood. That's just another comment out there that if we, we do decide to, to approve it, I would definitely want the balcony railing to be wood. I go around our city and I can't stand the ones that are not Monterey's when they have those aluminum type balcony railings. I think it really changes the character of that. So that's just another aside. So for me, I'm still struggling with the density. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Dustin.
Help me.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I was very like-minded with what Commissioner Wright had brought up. I was very appreciative to see the extensive changes by the applicant, but you know, they really did respond to a lot of the things that were brought to note at the last meeting. I did predict that they would make the easy changes and not the hard changes and that is what paid, panned out like always. I don't, I just flat out don't accept the fact that the roof problems can't be fixed. The roof is distorted and misshapen. It is not compatible with the Monterey colonial style. It has nothing to do with the fact that they've chosen to do a hip roof and that's preventing them from fixing it. It's got everything to do with the fact that they have maximized their interior square footage and they've chosen a building orientation and layout that is not compatible with the Monterey colonial style because they're looking for that maximum interior square footage. So I am in an absolute agreement with Commissioner Wright on that. Again, the comments on the plate height, I appreciated the drop in, in plate height, but that is not sufficient in my view to reduce the massing to where it's, where it's compatible in this neighborhood. Let's see. So again, I also agree, the balcony railings, again, that is a classic detail for Monterey Colonials, wood railings. I, again, I don't accept the applicant's request for maintenance, ease of maintenance. Vinyl windows, vinyl siding, vinyl fencing is all easier to maintain and we don't permit that either. It needs to be the style that they've chosen. Also, I have a real problem with the windows. Again, they, they have not changed the fenestration in the, particularly in the rear of the home, there's these large plate glass windows. That's a very contemporary look. It just simply doesn't fit that style that they've chosen. The balcony, again, I appreciate they're sort of fiddling with the landscape a little bit, but to me, the landscaping changes are not a sufficient cure for the privacy problem for the neighbors. And then bay windows, again, bay windows are not a feature that you see on a Monterey colonial period. But if you're gonna put bay windows in, then you need to do them correctly. And the bay window that's proposed is not designed correctly. It is basically three small stuccoed walls with windows in each of the little walls. And that's not how you construct a bay window. A bay window, first of all, the base of it should be distinct from the window and the window, you don't have wall treatments in between the window panes on a bay window. It's, it's all one continuous wood framing around the glazing and in a band. And then below that is the base and above that is the roof and you just don't have that. It's a very frankly inexpensive and cheap way to resolve a bay window and it just doesn't look right. The garden window that they're proposing, again, it's not something you would ever see on a Monterey colonial, but you know, if I'm gonna be outvoted on that, at least do it right. You don't have a window that doesn't have any visual support underneath it. You, at the, at the very minimum, you need to have substantial wood brackets underneath that window that visually carry the mass back to the exterior wall. You don't just have it sticking out like that. So I also still have concerns about, you know, the landscaping. There's an extensive amount of hardscaping. I was really happy to see the sycamore tree in the front. That is a big specimen tree. It has the potential to get very large. I just hope that they let it grow large, but in the back, there's a lot of hardscaping. It's gonna generate a lot of heat and I don't see any trees that are appropriately placed to shade and mitigate that heat effect. So those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Chang.
Uh, yeah, I would echo most of the comments made about, you know, the efforts made by the applicant. I'm appreciative of the efforts that were made. The only things that, that I would agree with some of the comments that were made as well for changing and altering what was proposed would be to have the consistency of the divided lights as opposed to plate windows at the rear of the property for overall consistency and architectural integrity of the design. I agree with the comments made by Commissioner Dustin about the bay window as well as the garden window. I think if those can be conditioned accordingly, I, I think that would be beneficial to the overall project and the aesthetics of the home and compatibility with the overall neighborhood. Outside of those items, I think the, the changes and modifications made address my concerns and I'd be able to support the project.
Thank you. Alternate Commissioner Okazaki. Oh, you're muted, James.
Oh, muted.
Still can't hear you, James. I think he's saying skip him.
Okay.
That's why, if I can read lips, that's what I'm reading.
That's what I'm getting to. So, um, alternate Commissioner Chow.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I too concur with the sentiments of the other commissioners that have spoken, especially that of Commissioner Dustin. My primary comments relate to massing and I too agree that the roof can be resolved in such a way to minimize the massing. So I would prefer that the applicant would work on that to try to come up with a solution rather than saying that, that the hip roof is the only design possible for this. My other two comments are this, I do believe that the bay windows are inconsistent with the Monterey revival style. That's already been addressed and although that, those other windows are in the rear and not visible from the streetscape, those, you know, consistency of design for the overall plan would be desirable. That would be my comment there and because this is a, finally, a teardown of an existing property, I would hope that during the construction phase that there are mitigation procedures that are taking place as well or that are implemented so that it doesn't disturb the overall neighbors and the neighborhood. You know, so those would be my recommendations related to this particular agenda item.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Vice Chair Brody?
Yeah, let me just read off my notes. First of all, I like to start out with a basic thesis that I review these things with and that is that it's not only compatible with the neighboring dwellings, but it's compatible with itself. If it's supposed to be a Monterey, it's supposed to be a Monterey on all four sides. Not, I don't know what the heck this is from the rear versus something like a Monterey in the front. My notes are simply this, too much massing, too much hardscape. The landscaping is inadequate. The roof is just bizarre. Incompatible on the metal railing. I don't know what the heck the desire was to retain that. Certainly has nothing to do with maintenance. The windows, the rear and the bathroom windows remaining the same completely distorts the concept of Monterey. The bay window and the garden window as well. And all I can say is, is this misses the boat by a mile and I not only could not support this, but I would move to to disapprove this particular project.
Thank you for your comments. Alternate Commissioner Okazaki, were you able to figure out your muting? I want to give you a chance. Oh, we can hear you.
Thank you. You know, I, I'm very appreciative of what the architect and the owners did. I, 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 I just can't be as critical as all of you on the, on this project. I, I'm satisfied with what the project looks like. I think it is compatible with the other projects, other buildings in that area. I, I don't think it's, it's that massive for that street on the north side of California. I think it fits in fine, but I leave it up to the voting members to make the decision on it. But, you know, I, I, myself as a alternate, I am very happy with what the architect and the owner did in, in addressing the issues that were presented by the commissioners the last time. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Um, I will say that there was, yeah, all of my fellow commissioners have shared the exact same sentiment that I do. Like all of you, I was very, I was very pleased with how the applicant was trying to be very accommodating based on our last comments. And I appreciate the, the time and effort that it took to, you know, to change the plans. However, like my fellow colleagues, especially Commissioner Wright, Dustin and Brody, I don't, I, I do not feel that this is compatible with the neighborhood, nor do I feel that it's compatible within its own design. For all of the reasons listed, the balcony, the bay windows, the, yeah, the, the back does not look like a Monterey, what is, sorry, what is it supposed to be? Anyway, my point being is that I don't think that this hit the mark in terms of something that I can accept as is. As you can imagine, my largest concern is the lack of shade canopy. I think that there are not enough trees and I disagree with the, the homeowner's request to not put more trees in there. I think that this will create, there's so much concrete that this will create, uh, this will just increase the heat of this area. San Marino, granted, I know it is supposed to, it mostly applies to the front yard, but in our design, in our design review guidelines, it says to create a park-like atmosphere throughout the city. And this, looking at the images of what the backyard renderings would be, is not park-like to me at all. A note that I just want to make to staff, because this is something that has come up in a query and maybe in our later discussion item that we have with our city attorney, maybe this can be brought up there. But I also know that as we are in drought conditions, I would very much like to explore pools in new developments. I know that there is an existing pool, but, and there are not dimensions on our drawings, but I do, I would like us to go back to the table and find out if there are any requirements with regards to water restrictions from going to, to creating a larger pool, because it does seem from the renderings that this is a much larger pool than what the homeowner originally has on property. And I think that since we are suffering immeasurable drought and having to cut back on our water, increasing the water use in a pool should be brought up to question. Um, so those are my notes that, you know, my, my biggest thing is always the landscaping and this landscaping is nothing that I can approve. So along with all the other notes. So with that, is there a motion that anybody wants to make?
Yeah, as stated, I, I will make a motion to deny Design Review 21-14HP.
And is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay. And Camelia, can we please have a roll call on that vote? Or on this motion?
Uh, yes, and for staff's record, because if the vote
Uh, yes. And for staff's record, because if the vote passes, we would have to bring back a denial resolution. Um, which condition, I mean, what conditions, which findings would you make for us to put in the denial resolution? And what would that finding be so we can tailor that for you?
We can, we can talk about that after a vote is taken and after it is all said and done in terms of crafting the resolution. I don't think that's necessary at this point. That's quite unique. I've never had a situation where the planning staff has requested an outline of the factors that go into the resolution itself. Not at this.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Brody. Typically, it is it is customary to have the planning commission make a motion on denial based on the project not meeting a finding or findings. I'm not sure if that is the custom here in San Marino where you would make the motion and then.
I don't know if this helps, but I can say that at least from my assessment of this project, I would say that it fails to meet finding number one, the proposed structure is not compatible with the neighborhood. And I say that I would also say that it fails to meet finding number two, that it does not, it's not designed and developed in a manner which reasonably balances the expectation of privacy of persons in contiguous property.
And and that would be what staff would be looking for. And again, this is a reminder. If a project does not meet at least one finding, then it would be basis for denial. A project has to meet all findings for an entitlement.
Yeah, understood. But as I said before, I've been doing this for 20 years. This is the first time this has ever come up where there's any specificity required before the vote is taken.
And generally, our deliberations are used to guide the findings. At least if we're doing, we're doing a good job, then we have articulated the basis for for our denial. But of course, if you don't think we've done a good enough job and you need more, we certainly would want that from staff. I concur with Commissioner Dustin. It's really mostly finding one as far as the compatibility. And we're talking about within itself as a Monterey colonial as well as within the neighborhood. And specifically within the neighborhood, the proposal is way larger than pretty much any house. There might be one or two, but pretty much any house in that neighborhood. And it also, from the standpoint of within itself, all the things that Commissioner Dustin highlighted as far as the railing, the windows, the hip roof, all are not consistent with the Monterey colonial. And so we would deny it on that basis. And as far as the privacy, I think Commissioner Dustin also articulated that well as far as the the neighbor. So, but but yes, I agree with Vice Chair Brody. Generally, we hope, we hope that you can gather that from our deliberations. That's our intent.
Right. And and I think, I think staff concurs with your statement, Commissioner Wright. I think this commission does an outstanding job of highlighting the issues with the project. But it would be beneficial for not only the record, but for the public to listen to the basis of the denial, which would be that the project does not meet eight or two findings or whatever, whatever finding that might be.
So what I'm, so what I'm hearing is that what is the the new request moving forward is that as we are making a motion, if it is a motion for denial that we are specifying in the motion, what findings we can, I was going to sound redundant, but what we, what findings we disagree with or what findings we cannot find justification for.
Correct. Which findings, which findings you feel the project has not met.
Okay, so moving forward.
The only question I have on on something like that is, A, it's never been done before. And B, as Commissioner Wright astutely pointed out, this is specified very clearly if you'd listened to what the commissioners are saying. And then crafting a resolution would follow as a simple procedure. We've had three different planning directors that had no problem with that.
Vice Chair Brody. Vice Chair Brody, I hear everything that you're saying. And I believe that what the request is, is that now for the record and for the different laws that we are facing with regards to housing and planning commission deliberations, city staff is now requesting that we reiterate the findings when we are making a motion, especially as it pertains to a denial.
Yes, because there, there are new laws that require objective standards for.
Very well, thank you.
And I would just like to say, that's easily done. And I think just even just in terms of transparency to the public. I mean, when I lay out my notes, I put all my comments in groups under which finding they caused me to not not be able to meet. So that that's very easy for me to integrate that in the comments in the future. I am kind of on the fence about whether this is a denial or a continuance. But like I said, my experience from the last meeting is, I don't think this applicant is willing to make the difficult changes and expensive changes. So I don't really see a lot of chance for this to be successfully resolved with a continuance.
And we did already.
Yes.
So with that, there's a motion and a second. Camelia, can we please take roll call for this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion based off the motion of denial for the project not meeting findings on one and two. Chair Boyle.
Sorry, I vote yes, but I am voting to deny this. So yes.
Yes, for denial. Okay.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Brody.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Okay, vote passes 5-0 for denial.
Thank you very much. With that, let us move on to agenda item number two. And I'm sorry, I'm getting to that.
Chair Boyle, can I just interject for a moment? Just, it might be a good time to just remind the applicant that we'll be bringing back the resolution of denial at the next scheduled planning commission meeting and that the appeal period will be triggered from the adoption of that resolution.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, so now with that, moving on to agenda item number two, which is designer view case number DR 21-80. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes. So this is item number two for 1865 South Los Rovers Avenue. The applicant is requesting to demolish an existing 1,448 square foot single story residence and construct a new two-story, 2,568 two-story residence with a with an attached garage. The proposal is also keeping the existing garage and not demolishing that. That's on the property. The applicant provided a historic resource report, but the property itself was not identified on our historic survey that the city implemented. And as part of the tree preservation, the applicant is proposing to remove one heritage tree and one established tree. The property is allowed to have a maximum of 2,700 square feet in livable area and lot coverage. The proposal is going to be under that threshold for both items with a proposal of 2,568 square feet of livable area and 2,157 square feet of lot coverage. In the neighborhood input letters, we've received nine that do not object, two that do object, which are the adjacent neighbors to the north and to the south, and then two with no responses. I would like to note that attachment number nine is objection letter from one of the neighbors. And then as part of, to indicate on the record, we did forward a letter of support from one of the rear neighbors, which you should have received.
I'm sorry, that's attachment nine in the the separate set of documents that you sent out for this item?
So attachment nine is the objection letter which we received prior to the agenda being sent out. So it's part of the agenda packet. The support letter was provided to us after the agenda was sent out. So we sent that in a separate email once we received it.
I'm sorry for a point of clarification. It's attachment eight, which is the objection letter. Attachment nine is the staking plan and story pole.
Oh, sorry. I had those numbers mixed up then. I'm going back to, this project is found to be categorically exempt from CEQA. And this project only requires one designer view finding for a new home. This project is not exceeding the threshold of the 25% in previous coverage. The new home is proposed and designed to be a Spanish colonial revival. And staff in the findings has made recommendations of approval that the findings have been met. And attached is the conditions of approval resolution. So do you decide to approve the project or or continue it? And as part of the attachments is all the necessary harvest report, topographic survey, staking plan with the story pole certification. Story poles have been placed on site. I would like to notate that this project was proposed to be brought before the last planning commission meeting and was requested to be continued. At that time, it did contain a conditional use permit because the proposal, the second story was going to encroach into the 30-degree plane. At the time, staff recommended to continue the project because the applicant and the homeowners wished to redesign because of comments brought forth by the adjacent neighbors. So they have since redesigned the project, which is what is the attached plans that are before you. And so therefore, the conditional use permit is no longer needed because the proposal doesn't encroach into into the 30-degree plane. But the story poles currently on site have the setbacks and the structure as the 30-degree encroachment plane. But should the commission want the story poles to be adjusted to meet the new second story setbacks, which the walls were brought in to to not require that CUP anymore, the applicant could make that adjustment to the story poles. Um, that sums up my report for this project. I'm available to answer any questions. The applicant is also available to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. And fellow commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will now ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to comment on the project and proposal.
Hi, my name's David Law. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm I'm the principal architect at Law Design Group. Quite sure if my video is working or not, but.
Video on.
So it says it's on, gosh. Let me turn it off and on again. Hmm. Okay, sorry about that. Well, I mean, to start with, I'd just like to say thank you for taking the time to consider this application. Just as a brief recent history, as Camelia mentioned, our original application was scheduled for the previous commission hearing. While majority of our neighborhood responses were very positive, we did get some concern comments from the direct neighbors on either side. And we just wanted to take the opportunity to to modify the design to better address that concerns. Generally speaking, the massing is a substantial part of this project. We worked really hard in order to be able to give this like a compatible massing with the neighborhood. The structure is designed to step back on both sides, but it also steps on the front. The most significant part of the second story massing is setback 66 feet from the from the property line, which is more than double the required 30-foot front setback. And with the sole intent of minimizing the massing, especially from the public street. The flat two-dimensional elevations really don't do a realistic job of showing how a project is seen from a human perspective. So I believe the Axon metric view that's on sheet A 5.3 is really the most representative of the views. The location of this project is also important to understand and that it has an existing two-story structure to the south, three existing two-story structures to the rear, and a home to the north that has a very high plate line that almost gives it the sense of a one and a half story massing. Just a couple of notes that I did see in this set, unfortunately, before it went, like after it went out. One thing is I like fixture discrepancy. I just want to let you know the fixture spec on A 5.4 is the correct one and not the notes on A 5.1, 5.2. And then also, there's a note on the landscape plan that shows new lawn in the rear, and that is not the intent. The intent is to do like pea gravel, like as referred to in the legend. And with that, I'd just like to hand it over to Irene Chen, the homeowner, and she can make a few comments too.
Hello, everyone. My name's Irene Chen, and this is my dad, Roy Chen, who are the owners of the property. And I think David obviously has covered everything. I just wanted to say thank you for having us here. And to just let you know, we've been working really hard to balance, or David's been working really hard to balance what we want in the home with the what's appropriate for the neighborhood. And this will be my home for the next however many decades, maybe for the rest of my life. Looking forward to raising a family there and joining the neighborhood and the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative? Yes, Commissioner Wright.
I'm not sure the architect can answer this, but looking at page, I think I'm right on this page, 105, when you're looking at the just the, this project itself, not the main agenda of this project itself. And it's the objection letter from the neighbors at 1857 Los Rovers. And I'm wondering if, and I noticed that it's dated May 6. So I'm wondering if the information, first, if you disagree with the information that's provided related to the four ratios of the neighborhood. And secondly, if it's changed at all since their letter of May 6, based on the changes that you say you've made as a result of neighborhood complaints.
So in relation to the neighbors' comments that we received, both neighbors had similar comments and that they felt that the second floor was too close to their property, which meeting the encroachment plane satisfies that requirement to an extent in that all of a sudden we've gone from a five-foot setback that we initially requested to an eight-foot setback at the second floor on both sides. So the second floor has has been brought in both sides in order to comply with the encroachment plane. The other comment that was addressed was the privacy, especially on the property to the south. They have like a patio on the side of their house. And actually, I I added the outline of both properties to the new roof plan. And so you can actually see, so we modified the windows on the new second floor too in order to push them further back in order to where they're not looking straight into the second floor of the house next to them. And then for the same way, for the the house to the north too, we moved the the windows to, there's very few windows actually on the north face already. And we removed one of the windows from the bathroom and put it onto the side. And that those were the the primary concerns that we addressed.
So did your square footage change at all based on their comments?
Yes, it reduced by over 100 square feet.
Okay, so you did have it up to like almost 2,700?
It was 26, yes.
So what, because you're now at 2,568 and what was it before?
I would say it was approximately 2670. It went just less, just over 100 square feet.
So that sounds to me, I don't know, I can't do the math so quickly. But I'm just wondering about this chart that was provided to us that showed that you were one of the most, one of the most massive houses in your neighborhood. And now we've gone down 100 square feet. So I just don't know how you, how that changes the the math. And I'm just wondering if you have done that. It sounds like you have not, which is fine. I'm just asking.
No, I mean, from my calculations, there's, with the new square footage, there's two houses that are larger than the the house as per. with the new square footage, there's two houses that are larger than the the house as proposed.
Right, right now they have you at point three eight, and assuming that's not after any longer.
Correct.
So what would you say?
And then just for the record too, like we we did provide new plans to the homeowners along with contact information to let them know, like we we who are listening to you, we we want to understand that like we're we're listening and we're open to making these changes, and here are the plans, these the changes that we've made. And we we'd love to chat, um, so we haven't had that conversation at this point, but still open to doing that.
And we appreciate that. Okay, I'm gonna try and do some math, I'm not very good at it, Commissioner Dustin, I'm looking at you again, I'll let you see. All right, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, um, any other questions?
I've got a question.
Commissioner Dustin?
Thank you, uh, on sheet A five point one of the plans. On the south elevation, you indicate a first floor plate height of eight point nine or I'm sorry, eight feet nine inches and a second floor plate height of seven feet ten inches. On the second floor, as you move to the uh right of the plans, you have a mark there of eight feet zero inches, can you tell me what that is a dimension of?
Yeah, absolutely, so that the seven foot ten plate line uh is that the plate closest to the property line on both sides. The eight-foot plate line is just that projection in the front, which is actually the master bathroom. Um, so that the projection at the very front has an eight-foot plate line, and then pretty much everything behind that and to the sides of it has a seven foot ten and a half, I think, seven foot ten.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, yes.
Well, yes. And I just wanted to follow up on on a question that Commissioner Wright had inquired about uh in that so after you have reduced the size of this project down by approximately a hundred square feet or so. And uh, you know, worked on the second story setback, does that adequately address the concerns of the contiguous property owner? Uh, that filed the objection um on May sixth? We have not heard any additional comments since we gave them the revised plans. Okay, have you made an effort to uh communicate with them related to whether or not your revisions have adequately satisfied their concerns? Yeah, so when I dropped off the revised plans personally at their house, which was last, end of last week. I had a handwritten note with my contact information, explained to them, I'd be happy to speak anytime. Um, and then the neighbor to the south, we actually had a a text from them a while back, so I was able to text them too. And and what was their opinion related to the proposed changes that were made? Uh, we haven't received any responses from them at all. Thank you. You're welcome.
I have a question.
Yes, alternate Commissioner Okazaki.
Just, I I don't remember, because I didn't specifically look for it. You have a a garage in the front, so I'm just wondering how many other dwelling units on Los Lobres have similar treatment where the garage is in the front? Like yours.
There's two other houses directly across the street that have, um, the garage is located in the front. Um, literally the two directly across, I believe. One of them is a front-facing garage facing the street, and one of them is a side-load garage, very similar to how we have it proposed.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
Thank you, no.
Okay, uh, before I open for public comments, Commissioner Wright, I did the calculation and the far has gone from zero point three eight to zero point three seven.
Oh, thank you, Chair.
You're very welcome. Uh, so with no other questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative, I would now like to open this to the public and ask for comments for against or about this project. And I saw in the chat that um Jennifer Giles would like to make a comment, and so uh at this time, I will allow her to speak.
Thank you, Chair Boyle, uh, my name is Jennifer Giles, I am at twenty two ninety Lorraine Road. Um, I have a few comments about this project. My understanding that if one is to tear down a house and completely rebuild a new house. One of our guidelines, our stipulations in the packet of information that is to be provided to the commissioners is an exonic- axonometric three D view of this project. Of which there are only perspectives that are shown on page A five point three. And that's it, in the new drawing set. And even that, it's very difficult to see a comparison of how this building would appear within the site with its surrounding neighbors. Also, it's very difficult to see on the drawings that the topography rises up to the site. So not only do you have a building that is in the twenty four and a half, I believe, height range. You're adding a good couple of extra feet to that. Um, that it's going to really tower over its adjacent neighbors on the eastern side of Los Robles. With this very large prominent two-story building. Now, the house directly to the south of this property, from my understanding from friends that are li- uh live within the neighborhood. It was a single-story home that was um damaged by fire and was rebuilt as a very extremely large two-story house. And this applicant is using that home as one of its basis for its massing and volume. So I very much caution you to um look at how this will start to perpetuate more um mansonization within this very quaint community already. Um, so first point is that there are no axonometrics shown of this project, and that's a requirement that I would feel would be valid valid to see how this building fits amongst its neighboring buildings on the site. Um, also, I am very questioning the plate height also that are in the eight, nine nine-foot range, it was very kind of ambiguous, hard to really follow along on on what the first and second floor plate heights are. Um, and again, I feel that the height of this building is going to start looming over its adjacent neighbors. Um, also, I uh I'm hearing the comments that the story polls that are actually currently out there are for the previous version design. I feel that that's a disservice to the neighbors, that they aren't getting um shown exactly to the T what this building is gonna look like, and I feel that it's important for current homeowner to change those story polls to meet this current design. So that everyone can validly see exactly what this building is gonna look like. And now with our requirements having story polls, I feel it is a wonderful piece of information for many in our community that aren't very um able to sort of discern drawings. And I feel that it's it's an important piece that needs to not be um you know, cast aside in any sort of decision-making. Um, lastly, I've noted on the drawings that talks about a future ADU. Now, I understand that individuals can convert existing space to um an ADU, and that can send their um properties um FAR over the legal limit, and I understand that. However, um, the ADU hasn't yet been approved, so why should this property have additional square footage in advance of um the ADU application being approved? So theoretically, they have two garages on site. One which will be parkable with vehicles, the other will be just um additional square footage. And I feel that that is misleading, and um someone's garage if it's going to be converted to an ADU, it first has to be a garage. At this point, that is not a garage, because it is inaccessible to a vehicle, so that should be torn down. And then a new building would be built, if that is what they would prefer. Thank you, that's all my comments.
Thank you so much for those comments, uh, are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this project? Uh, yes, I see another one, um. I apologize that I'm not sure how to pronounce your name. Um, so given that you put a comment in the or message in the chat, you can begin speaking.
Hi, yes, uh, this is Yao Dan Luo, I'm the owner of the eighteen seventeen, uh, eighteen seventy-three South Los Robles Avenue, San Marino. Which is uh right beside the property we are here. For today, maybe we'll object this request for the design of the new construction. And here are some reasons, first of all, the new construction is a two-story house and only five feet to my house. That means this new construction blocks almost all sunshine from our backyard. Our backyard is very limited and it's on the north side of the lot. With current new construction design, it will block sunshine for the whole afternoon till sunset. Certainly, our family will lose our privacy according to the construction plan. Our master bedroom, dining room, and family room and kitchen will have no privacy with this two-story new construction design. If we have, if we want to protect our privacy, we have to close the curtains all day. My daughter is only three years old, she needs privacy inside and backyard with sunshine. Last, not but not least, our second baby is on the way, I'm I'm eight months pregnant. I really need a quiet environment to deliver and raise the baby. The noise and dirt of the demolition and will will totally break it. And the newborn baby in is in the coming future needs privacy and sunshine too. The current design is too close to my house, it is only five feet away. We do welcome our new neighbor, but we ask our, we ask to the rec- reconsider, we consider the design of eighteen sixty-five South Los Robles Avenue. Also, we'll see if we can find a way to balance yours and our needs. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you so much, um, are there any other comments? I don't see any, so uh, given that, I am now going to close uh the public comments. And uh, we will now move on to the comments from each of our commissioners and start our deliberation. Commissioner Dustin, can you start us off?
Sure, uh, let's see. Uh, well, my first comment right off is this project is really big. Um, and it proposes a front yard garage. Um, there are, as the applicant pointed out, other large homes in the neighborhood, uh, some even larger than what this is proposing, and there are also homes in the neighborhood with front yard garages. What there are not are large homes with front garages. Um, I might be persuaded to be flexible on one or the other point, because they do exist in the neighborhood, but not both. This project just simply asks too much of the neighborhood in terms of massing, and I think it would substantially detract from the established presence of place that currently characterizes that street. I sympathize with the neighbor who commented about, you know, the disruption of construction on a new baby and so forth. Unfortunately, those are just simply things that we cannot consider in our deliberations. Construction is noisy and it's dirty and it's messy, and we can't ask people to not develop their properties uh out of inconvenience with those items for other neighbors. It's a temporary transient thing and it it will pass, and it's unfortunate, but um that's just not a criteria that we can use to to determine that. I have some problems with the layout of this house, in addition to just the fact that it is very, very large. Um, it's odd to me that you have the smaller plate heights towards the rear of the property, and the plate heights are larger facing the street where they are most of an imposition. There, um, I have a problem with the fenestration, with the exception of the arched window in the garage. There are numerous proposed plate windows and doors that again, as we discussed in our last project on the agenda. Uh, those are just not appropriate for the style, the architectural style that has been chosen for this project. Spanish colonial revival is a traditional architectural style, uh, and there are just these are, those are not elements that you would find, those large plate windows, again, with the exception of that arched window in the garage. Uh, you don't find that on that style of home. I have a problem with the arched window in the garage. I don't I think it's going to be very unsightly, having that very large opening into a garage where the neighborhood is gonna have to look at cars all day long or boxes that are stored or whatever. Uh, we we ask in San Marino that we garage our cars for the specific purpose of keeping them out of sight so that they are not, i- it's a more pleasant street view. You're now just opening up the garage for everybody to see. And if you put a window treatment behind the window, you know, a screen or a curtain or something. That's just sort of borders on um, you know, a movie set, you're just, you're building a facade to present a view to the street. But it's nothing real, and that leaves me with a very bad taste in my mouth. Normally, you know, the little terraces that are proposed in this project, normally those terraces of that size wouldn't be of a particular concern to me, uh, and in this project, the front terrace is still not a concern to me, I don't believe that's a privacy concern. But the rear terrace, I believe, is. This is a very dense neighborhood, it's very compact, and even fifty square feet standing out there, um you you have a clear view into the neighbor um to the north's uh rear yard space. Um, I don't think the proposed landscaping is an adequate cure to that, and um I I just uh, I I have very big concerns for the neighbor to the immediate north on that issue. Um, I I as the as the one uh resident commented, you know, we we do have this property immediately to the south, which is tremendously large, it has its own design um failings. So again, I would not hold that out as an example to be modeled after, because um it's not something that I think fits with the neighborhood. Um, an additional design element that I have a problem with is, you know, there's a very strange mix of uh parabolic and uh parabolic arches and arches that are like trying to be ellipsoid arches, but they really kind of fail. You can sort of see it on page A five point two. Again, on the first floor, you have this parabolic arch to the left, and then this sort of weird pseudo ellipsoidal arc on the right, or I'm sorry, on the left. Um, a- and then, you know, it's really just a rectangular opening with these sort of curved corners and then the little weird scalloping on the on the stucco. That that is again, a very contemporary look that you would see a lot on tract homes that are trying to look Spanish colonial revival. Uh, but it is a contemporary look, and it's not a good fit in this neighborhood where you have Spanish colonial revival with very traditional design details. I think the light fixtures, uh, also there you know, I don't really have a problem with the placement that I see and the the brightness of the fixtures that I that I see. Um, but they are a very contemporary look, and again, I don't think they're a good fit for the architectural style that's chosen. And then lastly, uh, the landscape plan is very sparse. Um, I would like to see additional detail. Um, you know, there's a, there's a bunch of thirty-six inch box olive trees on there. Again, that is really kind of hit or miss. A thirty-six inch box doesn't really tell you anything about the tree, um, that can be a very tiny tree, and it can be a pretty big tree. Uh, and also, it really depends on what they do with it after it's put in the ground. Olive trees, I've got a house near me that they built the house, I don't know, probably close to seven, eight years ago. The olive tree that they planted was probably in a thirty-six inch box, it's basically a large shrub, uh, because they keep it pruned and keep the canopy down tight, it's, I'm taller than the than the tree is, so I I'm not impressed with the with the landscape plan, so overall. So overall, I, I think there's, there's some major problems with the, the size and the configuration of this project. I don't, I don't, you look at all the houses across the street that have front yard garages. I don't like front yard garages. I would need a really good reason to approve one. But those houses are small, single-story ranch homes, not imposing at all. So very different, very different animal. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang?
Yeah, I would agree with all comments made by Commissioner Dustin. The only thing is I add is I give credit to the architect. This design that he's proposed is to maximize square footage on a relatively smaller lot. And so he, he's, he has accomplished that, but it's not compatible with the neighborhood. So I won't, I would not be able to support. Again, I did look for similar front garages on the street and did note the ones directly across the way. And those were as the single-family example, a single-story examples. So, you know, I think unless the applicant would propose to do a single-story complete redesign of the project, I don't think a front-facing garage would work in the neighborhood. And moreover, I, I think the overall design of the property is not compatible with itself as well as the neighborhood. So I would not be able to support the project estimate.
Thank you. Alternate Commissioner Okazaki?
Yeah, it is going to be a huge project. You know, I'm, I'm pretty close to those low breasts, so I walk the street. Although I didn't realize the building to the south, how huge that project was and trying to figure out which planning commissioner approved that. I don't remember that project during my tenure. But, but the comments are, that I've heard from all the commissioners are very, very good. I, I agree with the comments specifically about the, the huge window on the side of the, side of the garage. That, that doesn't seem to belong to a garage, that went, that type of a window. You know, you showcase a, a garage, a side of a garage. I think that's very poor design. But I realized that they wanted to reduce the masting of the, the side of the garage. But it doesn't look attractive to me either. The fact that, you know, you're eliminating the driveway and the distance from the neighbor on the south side and taking that upstairs, second floor closer to the neighbor, I think it is going to change the relationship that, that you have with your neighbor. And I think the comment that we heard from the lady on Lorraine, that wasn't, her point was a very interesting one. And I hope the staff could answer that to all of our satisfaction. That is, the ADU conversion from a garage, you know, that's allowable. But the fact that you're not allowing access to that particular building as a garage by putting up your building, removing part of that driveway to do that, does that still meet the requirement or the, the regulation pertaining to the ability to convert a garage to an ADU? That's an interesting question. I hope staff could answer that, working with the attorney and get back to us on that. Other than that, the concern about the neighbors from the north about the proximity of the second story where there is no buildings there because there's a one-story and the privacy and the sunlight being eliminated in, into their backyard. I, I hope you could work something out to come up with a resolution by modifying plated, it was additional, I don't know setbacks of the second story and the first story to minimize that. And maybe you could do a, a study to show if it is true or not that the sunlight, you know, will be blocked throughout the day or, you know, how many, how many hours during the day the, the light will not be able to hit that area if you have your second story building, you know, twenty feet up in there. But anyway, I, I, I hope that the architect and the owner could, could take a look at reducing the masting of this project. I, I, I don't know how to do it, but I'm sure you could come up with something. And so I, I hope we could continue this project to see if the architect and the owner could modify this project. I rather see a continuation of this rather than the total denial at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alternate Commissioner Chow?
Yes, thank you. Without reiterating what all the commissioners have said, I do agree generally with everything that has been said with regard to what staff was asking for related to why, you know, something may be denied. Think this is going in that direction for natural reasons. Related to compatibility, I do agree with that the garage and the masting is incompatible with what is around in the neighborhood. More particularly, what I've heard or the, based on the written objections, number two also is not found or cannot be found to be true related to the planning commissioners' objective here with regard to this project in that the proposed structure is designed, is developed in such a way to balance reasonable expectation of the privacy of persons residing in contiguous, contiguous properties. And that is something where both neighbors or contiguous neighbors, adjoining neighbors have indicated that, you know, there are privacy concerns as well as massing concerns. Now, I recognize that there has to be a balancing that's completed because, you know, neighbors can't necessarily dictate the development project of a specific applicant, you know, a hundred percent. But it does need to be taken into consideration where there's an adjoining neighbor, you know, that share property lines that has concerns over the massing and scale of the project. Related to sunlight and you, I know that although legally there is no right to any type of sunlight or view, that is a concern that's been expressed. And so I guess it's something that, you know, I would appreciate if the applicant can go to the neighbors or go to those that have objected to the project and try to work something out to the mutual satisfaction to the best of everybody's acceptance or best of everybody's ability. So that, that would be my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Brody?
Yeah, without taking too much time, I think this mirrors the same problem that we had in the prior, prior instance. And that is that it fails to be compatible with the neighborhood as well as within itself for the many, many reasons stated. I personally looked at this and felt that there was an attempt to mask the front significantly and then drop back as you move back in the rear terrace, I thought was a huge negative. I don't know if this is one that should be continued simply because of the amount of work to get this right is very significant, extremely significant. And let me just say, what we're looking at here is a fourteen-hundred-plus square foot abode on a less than seven thousand square foot piece of property in an area where density is the rule rather than the exception. So I am very sympathetic towards anything where you're taking a fourteen-hundred-square-foot home and expanding it because one would expect that anyone living there would want to do something like that. However, in this particular case, the sensitivity isn't there, the compatibility isn't there. And I couldn't support anything even remotely, an iteration of this. So that's where I am on, on this one.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Okay, well, for me, I think I would be willing to continue it mainly because it's the first time in front of us. They did try to work with the neighbors at least a little bit. I appreciate that. I understand what Vice Chair Brody is saying. It's a big ask. But I would want them to deal with the masting. I agree with all the comments about the masting and something to do with the front garage. I agree with that. And I personally do not care for that step-back design. I don't like it throughout our city. They always look like they're badly added on properties, even though this is a brand-new one. And again, to disguise the kind of mass, massing, I don't care for that, that style at all because it's, it's, it's just a way to get more messy. And colleagues, is it just me? There's every single project that comes before us basically to the maximum. And which if every single house on your block was that would maybe make sense. But I'm getting really tired of it. And also, let me just say, one of the great things I love about the commission besides working with all of you, smile, is to, to really go out into our neighborhood. And of course, I've been in Los Robos forever. In fact, it's been called many things through my, my life. But I'm always, it's so much traffic. I'm never really looking at the houses. So obviously, this week I parked, I walked it. And wow, you know, what, for the most part, what a nice modest house. Hadn't been remodeled in large areas and I was so taken with the neighborhood. And then so shocked by the, I want to say it, monstrosity that we've all talked about north of this property. Just, I'm with our, our alternate commissioner Okazaki, who, who approved that and why I'm always so hard on masting colleagues because I don't want to be the one who approves anything like that. And so we have to stay strong and not allow anything like that. So I would also like the story polls to be changed. I think I agree with the comment of our, our, our neighbor about how the neighbors of Los Robos property are entitled to see exactly what the project is. Would help me also to see that. And I expect it will change even more if they, if we do decide to continue this. So not wanting to say anymore because everyone has said it. That's it.
Thank you. So the first thing that I want to say, and I apologize if this sounds harsh, but I do not feel that this project should have even come before us at the state that it's at. The story polls were inaccurate. We were not given all, we, the commissioners, were not given all of the information we are required to be, to receive. For example, as our resident shared with us about the 3D view drawings, the fact that there were, that staff should be aware that there may be legality questions with regards to the ADU and the fact that it is not a functioning garage. And so therefore, can it immediately become an ADU? I think that this, I think that there's so, I think that it was an incomplete project to come before us to even deliberate on. That said, given what we do have in front of us, I agree with everything that my fellow colleagues have shared. I don't agree with a front yard garage. I personally, not only do I think it's incompatible to this neighborhood, I think it's incompatible to this style. The masting, this is a, a very large home. Similar to Commissioner Wright, I, it causes me a lot of concern that every project that we get before us has already gotten to the maximum livable area. Like, there should be room to grow. Not everything needs to be as large as it may be allowed. I understand that they are allowed to do that, but it does present a lot of concern for me that we are constantly getting things that are already to the maximum of livable area. I'm not going to go into all of the detail, you know, I'm not, I don't want to reiterate everything colleagues have said. The one thing, the landscape plan, completely unacceptable to me. There is so much non-plant-based surface that this is nothing that I could approve as-is. Even if you do have pea gravel, the surface temperature of that property will be so high. And given the density of the surrounding neighbors and the surrounding homes, it will detrimentally impact their neighbors. Along the lines of what Commissioner Dustin said, and this is more directed towards staff, I would like us to revisit our tree ordinance. I'm sorry to say that. I know it was a beast the first time. Having gone through a tree removal recently and needing to do replacement trees, I have come to realize that there is a lot of variation in what is called a thirty-six inch box or a twenty-four inch box. And you literally could have a toothpick in a thirty-six inch box and it would qualify under our ordinance. I think we need to revise our ordinance to require an age of a tree, a canopy of a tree, the tree trunk dimensions. Boxes are completely insufficient to actually get what we are after, which the intent is to create a shade canopy and a park-like structure. You might not get that with a thirty-six inch box. I personally, I feel continuing this. We, we would need to be presented almost an entirely new house. And if that is what my colleagues want to do, that's fine. I don't feel that this is compatible with the neighborhood nor compatible with the style. I think that it definitely impacts the privacy of the surrounding neighbors. And for me, as it stands, this is not something that I can support. So with that, I would like to ask if there is a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion. Let me just preface the motion I'm going to make with this statement that it has been my philosophy throughout that if, when it comes to tweaking a design or when there's something that the applicant can go back and make a corrective situation so that we can approve, I'm very much in favor of a continuance. That's not the case here. We have so many changes that are necessary. This is not a matter of tweaking anything accordingly. And I agree with the chair entirely. This should have been screened very well by staff. And certain things that were omitted that was brought up should have been caught and corrected before it ever reached us. But let me make that motion to deny DR twenty-one dash eighty.
Do we have a second? I, I will second that. So we have a motion and a second. Can we have a vote?
Can we have just a brief discussion on that? On a continuance versus a denial? My, my only, I, I, I agree with Chair Boyle and Vice Chair Brody. I think there are wholesale changes that would need to be made with this. I'm always sensitive though to the fact that when you do a denial, the applicant has to pay a new application fee as opposed to with a continuance. But my big concern is that, yes, they're right. This is going to require wholesale changes because I, I cannot see approving a two-story project with a front yard garage. So it would have to be, you know, the clean slate. But I don't know, is there anybody else that's concerned with the fact that they need to refile?
That was exactly my, my position. Yeah.
I would agree too. I have similar sentiments.
My, my, that's my concern as well. I should actually give the homeowner and the architect an opportunity to modify their plan.
I, I think if we could reopen a discussion or at least direct a question to applicant to see if they would be willing to have a wholesale change. If they, if they can determine no, then, then I think we have our answer.
Wow. And I, I'm, I'm just going to add real quick in terms of a continuance or denial. I'm fine with it. I, I could support a continuance, but there would need to be, I would need to see a second set of outreach to the neighbors for sure. So that, you know, we know that they, you know, as we know, that you don't have to do that second set of outreach with the new plans. And I would require that we would have to have that. And I don't know how we do require, I don't know how we stipulate that that must be done and legally have it done. You know, and, and You know, and, and I, so I don't know what to say and.
But, 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 but the chairman, chairwoman, the, the, the concern came specifically from the two adjacent neighbors. And the architect and the owner agree that they will follow up with them. And they will come to us with a, with a plan that everybody could agree to.
But what if they don't?
The rest of the community was okay with this particular project. And if it's going to be a boost project, it should be automatically okay.
I, but, uh, alternate Commissioner Okazaki, I, I so respect everything that you're saying, but the reality is, is that even if we've, we've dealt with this before, even when all of the neighbors have agreed that they approve the project, it is not in their hands. It's in our hands to review the design guidelines and make that decision based on what we are presented with. And while I would love to say we'll continue it, but you have to have, you know, agreement with these two other homes. What if they don't? And again, I'm not trying to push for denial. And I'm, I'm just saying as it stands, I can't support this. And if, if there is a motion on the table and a second, and if it's denied that, or you know, if it is not voted whatever, you know what I'm saying? If it loses the vote, then there can be a new motion for a continuance. You know, I just, uh, my concern, my concern is, is that this project will need to be so transformed. In my opinion, to meet the requirements that I'm hearing from Commissioner Dustin and Commissioner Wright. And, and Commissioner Chang that so transformed that how do we ensure that it's going to go through those residential checks? And how are we going to go, you know, how are we going to ensure that all of these things happen, especially if we don't even have the answer to what our resident brought up about the garage and the ADU and at what, like, does it have to be a functioning garage to be turned into an ADU? Does it have to be demolished?
Well, the ADU is not before us.
I know.
Can we ask staff if there is a path to deny and permit them to reapply without having to pay another fee? Like a denial without prejudice?
Well, two things, you, if you decide to deny, typically it, the applicant is not allowed to resubmit for a year. But if you deny without prejudice, which is what we've done with the Canterbury project at the beginning of the year, the applicant could resubmit. It would be a brand new project. They would have to pay the filing fees again. Staff doesn't have the ability to waive the fees. And I don't know who does, to be honest with you. We would have to, to look into that. And then I would like to point out that as far as ADU regulations. Any resident can convert any existing structure into an ADU. Like you can convert a pool house into an ADU that's existing in the backyard. You can convert a garage. You could convert a guest home. So potentially this garage or a structure, even if they call it storage now, as it's no longer going to serve as garage could be converted legally into an ADU.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Vice Chair Brody, would you be willing to amend your motion to be a denial without prejudice?
I certainly would. And let me just say this, that we can't go down the road and, and this is a philosophy I've had. Where we had a, a committee do this and it led to a lot of problems where we negotiate designs. We don't do that. It either is Spanish, it is Monterey and so forth, or it isn't. But it can't be, well, I kind of like a window that has nothing to do with this style. So since I gave you this, why not give me that? That's not the way it works. And I think that message has to be drilled home. That it has to be consistent within itself and within the neighborhood. So yes, I would make it without prejudice. And, and, and show amend the motion.
And Chair Boyle, who has to have a second?
Yes. So with that, Camilia, would you please take a vote? Or you know what I'm trying to say?
Yes. And then I would like to, for, for the clarification on my past comment about denials.
Oh, on the findings, it would be findings one and two, I believe, which is incompatibility with the neighborhood as well as privacy concerns.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I'll add that to the vote record. And as far, as far as for the denial of a project, it would be considered a brand new project should they decide to resubmit. Therefore, it would be at the end of all of our, our new homes, we have like five to six new homes down the pipeline and it would it would restart over from the beginning. And at current staff levels, it probably wouldn't be reviewed for the next year.
Yeah, I, I recommend that we say no to this motion. That's my two cents worth.
And what would it be if it were continuance?
That's what I'd like to see, a continuation.
I understand. Uh, staff, how long would it take for you to review if it were continuance?
I can, I understand that this, with the comments you provided, it is almost like a total redesign. Staff recognizes that. As a continuance administratively, it, it is easier because it's an existing project. And we take projects and review projects, the order they were received and continued projects take priority over new projects. So if it was continued with the redesign, we would make sure that the redesign addresses your comments. And if it doesn't, we would tell you how it does and does not. And at that time you can decide once again to continue or to deny, deny the new proposal. To answer your question, a continuance would bring the project before you faster. I don't have a timeline for that because it all depends on how fast they resubmit and staff's availability at the time. But definitely it would be a project bought before you a lot faster than.
Don't, we don't have any, we don't have any concept of a lot faster. Is that a month? Is that two months? Is that six months? I mean, we're, we're in la la land here.
It sounds like less than a year, Howard.
Yeah. Sorry, this is a.
Sounds that way. Boy, you're hearing stuff I'm not hearing, Commissioner.
Well, we have a, we have a motion and a second. Can we?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's move. Yeah, let's move forward with the roll call because it may not pass.
Or it may.
Or it may.
All right. Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
No.
So the denial passes three to two. I'm, I'm sorry, clarification is a denial without prejudice and not meeting findings one and two.
It is without prejudice for one and two. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's ends this project.
Thank you. And I will just say, I hope that the applicant heard all of the concerns and does come before us with a future project.
Yeah, I do have one comment to add. I don't know if applicant and their architects are aware of the open forum opportunities with design review after their meetings to go over potential designs. But I think that would bode very well for you so that in your next iteration and resubmitting, you would have actually had some input from folks that, that are on the committees pertinent and provide input. So you don't go through this again.
Commissioner Chang, this is a community development director, Figaro. That particular service has been suspended due to the city attorney and staff looking into potential Brown Act violations of the service. So.
Even, even, and that, that's a Brown Act with just two folks or one or?
It, it, it create, it potentially creates some prejudice based on observations from staff on the and the way the meeting, the, the service has been conducted. So at this point, we're, we're, we're looking into it. So for the time.
I'm sorry, Director Figaro, when, when was it discontinued?
This was, I believe, back in either March or late February.
And that's, that was, I, I mean, and that doesn't, I'm not saying anything, but that was under your, when you were the director at the time or?
Yes, no, it, it was under my observation that I took the matter to the city attorney's office and we were concerned about the potential conflict there. And so we, we alerted the DRC and we're still looking into it just because of staffing.
Did city, I mean, does, I guess, did city council have any say on, on that? Or is it purely a procedural piece that is?
The city council was advised of the action that was taken. And so the city attorney agreed with staff on, on looking into it, on the potential conflicts that.
Okay. No, I, that's helpful to know, but the value is, is, is shown today. Had the, had they had that opportunity or were given the opportunity, they may have been able to do something different, not have this project denied and, and, and closer to a, a continuance potentially, right? I'm not guaranteeing, but you know, if, if you guys, if staff could look at that as a, as a opportunity and ways to mitigate or ensure Brown Act non-violation. Whether it's just restricting, restricting it to a single committee member for it to review. It's my previous experience that has been very helpful that to get that initial review. And I'd say even more pertinent, given the, you know, relatively new arrival of staff that, that that is new to the community.
Yeah, let me echo that. I, I think it's a point that I was the first chair of the original design review committee back in 1989 through 94. And that was extremely helpful to the community. We didn't have any lawsuits arise out of that. It was a real positive to establish consistency, to establish an understanding that we're here to help. And I think it worked out extremely well and it has worked out subsequent to that date. So I think when it's presented to the city attorney, it ought to be presented in terms of what are the upside versus the downside? And from the upside, we have a business, community relations plus the downside is what? Someone has to sue for the, an application or some drawings that they submitted that they're claiming that they were led down a primrose path. We have never seen that. And this open forum has existed since 1989 and was just discontinued in February or March by administrative fiat.
Right.
Which is a deep concern of mine.
Yeah. And I, I see that we have some city council, you know, present at this meeting. So you know, I, I understand city council's made abreast of this. I would like to hear the rationale that in the agreement, whether it was purely legal or there was some validity and value to not having this service provided to our residents.
No problem. And again, I, I think from this, go ahead.
I've been, I, I'm not aware of the circumstances that led to that discontinuation. I think that was a discussion with the city attorney, Joe Montes. And I will follow up and find out what the, the background on, on the, that was and what the concerns were. But at this point, I, I'm sorry, I can't provide any more information about why that service was discontinued and I will look into it.
Great. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Um, shall we, shall we move on to agenda item number three? Thank you. So agenda item number three, can we have the staff report? I mean, I'm, I'm never quite sure what we need to do with resolution since it's just approving. It's just approving the resolution. So I don't know if there necessarily is a staff report. So if you could give some guidance as to what we, what I should be asking, what I should be saying.
Yes, um, the, it is under the consent calendar. So it is a what we did do is provide a memo in substitute for a staff report as this project was presented at the, both of these projects were presented at the last meeting. And nothing, at least for Canterbury, has changed in the, the planning commission didn't direct staff to change any of the findings. They agreed with the findings and voted to approve the resolution. So this item number three is just for the adoption, the formal adoption of the resolution of approval.
Great. Then do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll move to approve resolution number PCR 22-05.
Thank you. In a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. And can we have a roll call, please?
Uh, Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
I've got a quick question. Can I vote on a resolution for an item that I recused myself? Is it like approving minutes when you're not at the meeting or?
I, I would suggest you don't vote on that if you didn't, you had recused yourself.
That's fine. I'll, I'll, I'll recuse myself.
Do I need to, um, since our practice is to then have an alternate vote, do I need to bring up an alternate or on resolution? Is a resolution different than an actual like design review case?
Let me inquire. So the, the original vote was Commissioner, alternate Commissioner Okazaki involved?
Yes.
Okay, then he would be the one voting on this one.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so let, 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 let me redo the last two. Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Okay. And then just for the record, alternate Commissioner Okazaki, you're voting yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So then the vote passes for the adoption of resolution 5O.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number four, staff. Do you want to, is there anything that you need to say about this? Since it's not a staff report?
No, no, thank you, Chair Boyle. There was a memo, there was a memo that was sent to the commission or, or before, prior to the meeting. There are a couple of topographical issues that the eagle eye of Commissioner Wright caught and made a staff aware. So the, there was a reference to Huntington Drive on pages one and two that, that should be a reference to Mission Street. So that was corrected. The restaurant name was misspelled on pages four, five and six. So that was corrected. The acronym for the Economic Development Action Plan was misspelled. So that was corrected on pages five and six. There was a reference to conditional use permit under finding number two of the variance findings. So that was corrected on page six of the resolution. The voting record was incorporated. There was a variance, the variance request was incorporated under the standards of approval on page one. And there was a reference to 29 parking spaces under 2B that actually read six, which was captured under finding number two of the conditional use permit on page three of the of the findings. And that's it.
Thank you. Uh, is there a motion?
I'll move to to adopt resolution number PCR 22-07 amended.
I'll second that.
And can we have a roll call?
Sorry, forgot to do a roll call for this item. Um, Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 5O to adopt the approval resolution.
So how soon can I go and have a beer at Absar?
It's only the finest wine, John.
Oh, that's fine.
Director Figaro, would you like to give us your, moving on, sorry. Like it's starting to get late for, for me. Director Figaro, would you like to give your, your community development report?
No problem. I thank you for the opportunity, Chair Boyle. Members of the commission, staff is in the middle of recruitment for the existing vacant assistant planner position. Additionally, staff is in the process of interviews for the, both the existing vacant corner enforcement position and the part-time corner enforcement position, which typically works during the evenings and weekends, which currently is vacant. Again, just a reminder, the city council, staff is really appreciative of their efforts to provide staffing, additional staffing to the department. For the next fiscal year, the council has authorized the incorporation of the new assistant planner. A conversion of the existing halftime senior planner to full-time senior planner. The conversion of the existing management analyst from, from part-time to full-time. And the incorporation of a new permit tech. So as soon as the new fiscal year hits, we'll be hitting the ground on the recruitment for those positions. The existing, the consulting arborist has reviewed the first batch of. has reviewed the first batch of uh the backlog of the tree removal applications. I believe there were twelve that uh the arborist reviewed. The next batch will have an equal number of uh applications. The remaining batch, I believe, is between love ten and eleven, so hopefully we can get those uh completed as soon as possible. Uh in regards to the tree preservation ordinance, the council did move, did direct staff to bring that item to them in the near future. Uh currently, the urban forester position is vacant, and so uh staff is waiting for that position to be uh filled, so that that uh in that position can lead the expertise in regards to the technical aspect of the ordinance along with coordination with the community development department. Um that concludes uh the director's report, and then once again, thank you for all of your help and service.
Thank you so much. Um and then last agenda item five, uh I believe our city attorney is going to be giving us a presentation.
Yeah, we put together a series of slides to discuss with the commission uh recent housing legislation and the uh issues that are related to that in terms of findings and due process hearings and in other matters. So I'm gonna ask if Camelia or Isidro can start the presentation? And maybe she does, do a share screen.
Pull that up. Screen. Is this presenting okay?
Yes, for me.
Yeah, yes, yeah, so that's great.
Camelia, can you just move to the the next slide? So in my involvement with the League of California Cities on on various policy committees, I'd say that one of the biggest issues that we're always trying to uh address is the preservation of local control, uh whether that be uh in in legislation that's being proposed or in litigation matters in which we're serving as amicus um in support of of particular jurisdiction. Local control is always the focus, and unfortunately, uh the recent trends, at least as it relates to housing legislation, has been a significant decrease in local control over residential development and a corresponding increase in the scrutiny of local land use decisions that involve a housing project. So who's doing the scrutinizing? Uh it's the Department of Housing and Community Development's Enforcement Division. It's housing advocates, developers, and finally, the courts. Uh they're all going to be looking very closely at the decisions we make, because the way the legislation has been set up, it's heavily weighted toward uh development. Beginning it, well, there've been a number of housing laws that have been in effect for a long time, but really beginning in twenty seventeen, there were a myriad of bills uh that were uh passed by the California Legislature that substantially amended uh housing and planning laws. Initially, these bills were intended just to make it more difficult to reduce or deny uh density of housing projects um and to require that the city only apply objective standards to housing development projects um that otherwise comply with general specific plans and ordinances. As that legislation evolved, uh it really severely limited uh local zoning authority, and I'm sure some of you are aware of of some of these laws. We'll go through them in a moment, but as a whole, uh legislation has really upended uh interpretation of general plans and zoning ordinances. Um HCD, uh which what we refer to the uh Department of Housing and Community Development, uh has adopted guidelines that are heavily weighted toward the positions of the development community and the housing community. Uh those guidelines have not been challenged in 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 many cases, and um they have an enforcement division uh to enforce those guidelines and go after jurisdictions that it believes are not acting in compliance with state laws and regulations. Can you go to the next slide? So our agenda tonight, I'm gonna start by talking about the legal context, and by that I mean the context in which San Marino and its decision-making bodies, including the planning commission, make its decisions. Uh and then next up will uh be a review of your role in that process, the importance of making findings uh to support your decision, what constitutes a finding, and how to make findings that will survive judicial challenges. Uh we'll go over the concepts of ex parte evidence uh and ex parte contacts and how that can affect a fair hearing. We'll talk about conditions of approval. That's probably self-explanatory. I'm sure you're very familiar with what the condition of approval is. We'll talk briefly about the standard uh that you need to apply when you're imposing a condition of approval. Uh and then we'll talk about due process, and I think this is a topic that was brought up at the last meeting, is something that you wanted to address. It's probably a topic that deserves its own presentation by itself. I'll try to address the most important uh due process considerations tonight, and then if you have any questions, uh you can certainly direct them to me and I'll I'll answer them. And then finally, we'll talk uh about the recent housing uh legislation that's really changed the landscape for you as a planning commission. Uh we'll go through some of the key pieces of legislation. Again, each of those probably could deserve its own presentation in of itself, and this is going to be a much quicker uh review. And again, if there are any questions, you can always reach out to me or to Joe Montez with any questions. Next slide, please. So this is the legal context in which we operate. As you know, San Marino is a general law city as opposed to a charter law city. And as a general law city, we derive our corporate power from the general laws that are enacted by the state legislature. A charter city, on the other hand, derives its corporate powers directly from the California Constitution. It's subject to whatever limitations are in the charter and the enactments of the legislature uh on matters of statewide concern. So as a general law city, um we do have our local police power that comes from the California Constitution, and that enables us to enact and enforce regulations uh to protect the public's health, safety, and welfare. The zoning code uh is probably the most recognized, well-established manifestation of the local uh police power, constitutional police power. So and as you know, zoning code regulates all land use in the city and divides up the city into various districts. Can go to the next slide? Just a quick overview of the hierarchy of regulations. Obviously, the state laws are at the top, and then we have our general plan, which is our comprehensive long-term plan for the development of the city, which essentially acts as our our local constitution. We have specific plans below that, and then finally zoning codes. Next slide. I know some of this is gonna be uh not gonna be new to you. You've been working uh as planning commissioners for a long time. I understand that. Um and you know, just keep in mind, this is a presentation that we've provided to the city council and will be providing to the design review committee as well. We'll talk about findings here, and you see the bullet point that says decisions must generally be supported by findings. Let me just address quickly the difference between legislative and quasi-judicar- judicatory decisions. Uh legislative decision is one in which involves the adoption of broad, generally applicable rules of conduct on the on the basis of general public policy. Uh quasi-judicatory decision affects an individual uh based on facts peculiar to that individual's case or or application. Uh typically, what we look at and in trying to determine whether something falls into the legislative category or the quasi-judicary judicatory categories, whether by law, hearing is required to be given, whether evidence uh is required to be taken, and then the discretion and the determination of facts is vested in the decision maker. The reason why that's important is that when it comes to quasi-adjudicative decisions, there are fair hearing requirements that apply that that don't apply to legislative decisions. So unlike a decision-making body in a legislative capacity, uh decision-making body that's sitting in a quasi-adjudicatory capacity must be neutral and unbiased and are subject to uh fair hearing and due process requirements. Next slide. So what's a finding? Uh you probably remember from back in school when your math teachers would ask you to show your work. Uh you couldn't just provide an answer. Uh you had to show the steps that you took to get the answer. That's what we're required to do with findings uh for a quasi-adjudicative decisions. We have to show our work. Um so as you know, when it comes to these type of decisions, the city has to issue written findings in support of its decision. Uh and that standard is there must be substantial evidence to support the findings. And please note that, uh as we'll discuss in a moment, uh that higher standards now apply to certain decisions under housing law. We'll discuss that in a moment. Um the findings that you make uh must in turn support the decision and be sufficiently detailed to quote "bridge the analytical gap" unquote, between the raw evidence and the final decision. That comes from the the Topanga decision that is really uh the key decision when it comes to what constitutes a finding and and how a city satisfies that requirement. Um I mentioned that typically you have to have substantial evidence. And what is substantial evidence? Substantial evidence is is that is not necessarily a preponderance of the evidence. It's a lower standard than that. Um you think about the hierarchy of of, you know, when it comes to burdens of proof, reasonable doubt in criminal cases, preponderance of the evidence in civil cases, generally speaking, and then for these quasi-adjudicative decisions, substantial evidence. So that's evidence that when you consider the record as a whole, uh that someone might accept as adequate to support a conclusion, even though other reasonable people might disagree. So again, that's a lower standard than the preponderance of the evidence. And generally speaking, it's deferential to uh your decision-making. So if you were ever challenged in court, will we be there? We, to defend you, we just have to show that there was substantial evidence to support that conclusion, even if a court or some other reasonable person might disagree with the conclusion. Next slide, please. So when we talk about ex parte evidence, we're talking about actually two different concepts here. One is that uh any decision-making body like a planning commission is supposed to base its decision on what was said at a public meeting or hearing, and which is the the record, the administrative record. And the reason that is is so that all parties are fully apprised of what the facts are and that no one gains an advantage through private conversations. So when something is challenged in court, one of the first things we do is we put together the administrative record, everything that would have been in front of you or and or the city council. Again, the the thinking behind that is that all members of a planning commission or other decision-making body have the right to hear everything that is being said about a particular uh case or application. So everyone, including the applicant and those who either support or are opposed to a particular application or project or or any other type of matter that's before you, they have the right to hear everything uh that is said about that case and have the opportunity to rebut what was said or or support or endorse what was said. So having said that, you know, the law recognizes that it's impossible to avoid all contacts on all questions that might come before you uh and planning commissioner, city council members, members of the the design review uh committee, they're all either elected or appointed precisely because uh they are involved in the community and they understand what issues are important to that community. So it'd be unrealistic uh and be a difficult standard to meet if every ex parte contact, every time you had contact on some particular matter in front of you would result in uh disqualification of of you or nullificate, nullification of any action taken. So when it comes to ex parte contacts, I guess the best advice is to try and avoid them uh as much as possible, and if you get involved in the conversation on something that might be coming before you, uh the best advice uh and the best practice, so we avoid due process challenges, is to explain to that person that uh you can't talk about matters that are currently before the board or or commission or about to come before uh your decision decision-making body outside of the public meetings. To the extent you do have any ex parte contacts, I think it's important to disclose on the record the fact that the communication took place and then share any substantive uh information or any substantive information about that discussion uh when you're at the meeting. I think also important to to indicate on the record uh whether or not that communication uh would render you unable to to base a decision solely on the evidence to be be presented at the hearing. Um so if you do have a contact with someone, you can disclose that contact, disclose the substance of that contact, and I think it would make sense for you to explain that whatever contact that was, it's certainly not gonna impact your ability to consider the evidence that's being brought before you and to make a fair and unbiased decision. We're gonna talk a little bit about uh prejudgment in the due process context, but um I think it's important to remember that the the prejudicial effect of an ex parte contact is the fact that the other side is not given an opportunity to respond or is unaware of the contact altogether. So I think that's why it's recommended that you try to avoid them if you can, but to the extent you do have those ex parte contacts um that you disclose those on the record, and that would give other other uh interested parties a chance to respond uh to that communication. Next slide, please. So I think conditions of approval would be nothing new to to this commission. Obviously, when you when you approve a project, especially one that comes to you uh conditional use permit that you're there, you have to consider and vote on. Obviously, conditional use permit implies that there are gonna be conditions imposed, so um you know, some are standard, they're gen- you know, generally prepared by staff. You'll see them project to project. Others are more project-specific. The important thing to remember here is that the conditions that you do impose do have to be related to an impact of the project. And there also is a proportionality requirement, so you don't wanna impose a condition that is so out of proportion to what the potential impact is, that it could uh render that uh condition subject to challenge. Next slide, please. So this is just one slide here we have on due process, but it is a big topic, and I know that at the last meeting, there were some questions raised about that, and 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 I hope that uh our discussion here will answer those questions, and to the extent it doesn't, always feel free to reach out to me by email, or you can get my my phone number from Isidro, and you can call me. Because this is an important topic, and this is the one that generally is the subject of lawsuits. Not in San Marino, but gen- generally speaking, with cities that we deal with. People often raise due process challenges to uh quasi-adjudicative decision-making and quasi-adjudicative hearings. The basic due process requirement is notice and an opportunity to be heard, and that's the the basic requirement that kind of cuts across all types of hearings and proceedings that are subject to do to procedural due process requirements. Uh due process in the context of a quasi-adjudicative or quasi-adjudicatory uh decision uh also requires an unbiased decision maker, and I think that's the one that, you know, I get the most questions on. You know, to start, we we always take a look at the statutory and regulatory uh laws that affect conflicts of interest, and those are fairly easy and objective to apply. I think the more difficult um issues come up with what I've referred to in this slide as common law conflicts of interest. So these are situations where uh you don't have a conflict on the, under the Political Reform Act. Uh you don't have a conflict under Government Code Section ten ninety, but yet someone is claiming that you are an a biased decision maker. So what does that mean? Um a lot of times that'll come up where someone has said something publicly about a project. Uh maybe they've gotten in an argument with someone uh publicly about a project. And years ago, I had a case involving a of approval of a CUP for a uh supermarket in a city in Northern California. It was a hotly contested CUP for It was a hotly contested CUP for various reasons. And after the planning commission voted to approve it, one of the council members got into an argument with opponents of the project. This all took place at City Hall. It then went to City, the City Council on an appeal. And the vote was three, two, and the the council member who had been involved in that argument was in the majority, voting to approve the project. So what we were dealing with were arguments that this council member was biased. And we had to go through a couple of hearings. We were ultimately successful in defeating that argument. The project continued to move forward. But it's interesting because of the issues it raises. Traditionally, the courts have held that, you know, just the mere evidence of some type of prejudgment or statement made by either a council member or a commissioner is not sufficient to establish bias. And there are a number of cases that address that issue, including one from the California Supreme Court. And so it seemed like a very easy standard to apply that just the mere fact that a council member made comments about a project and then subsequently voted on it, that in and of itself is not sufficient to show that that council member or other official, decision making official is biased. Otherwise, there'd be a number of instances in which elected officials and appointed officials would be required to recuse themselves. And that would be really an untenable and workable standard. More recent decisions, though, have kind of cast some doubt on on that. You know, going back before these more recent decisions, it generally was held that you had to show really a high level of bias in order for you to be recused. And it usually required very extreme circumstances. So not just the fact that you got in an argument with someone, a project opponent or proponent at City Hall, and maybe got into a heated argument. It had to go somewhere beyond that. It had to involve rather extreme conduct. There's one case out of Hermosa Beach that talks about that. But these more recent cases should give us all a little pause on this issue. One of them is from the city of Los Angeles, Nasha versus City of Los Angeles. And that involved a planning commissioner who voted to oppose a project. It later turned out that that planning commissioner had authored an article or opinion piece in an HOA newsletter. It was very critical of the project, advocated against the project, then had not disclosed that he had authored that article and in fact had had made some misleading statements according to the opinion about his involvement in that article. So the Court of Appeal concluded that that commissioner's authorship of the newspaper article standing alone was sufficient to give rise to an unacceptable probability of actual bias. So it was interesting in that case because the Court of Appeal could have said that the fact that the planning commissioner concealed his authorship of that article, that that was determinative. But the court simply said that the mere authorship of the article, so the mere statements that were made in the article were sufficient to show bias. There was a more recent case from Newport Beach in which a Court of Appeal found that a council member was biased against a particular conditional use permit applicant because that council member had personally appealed the planning commission decision to the city council. His notice of appeal contained a statement that he strongly believed the CUP was was improperly granted and was contrary to the residential character of the neighborhood. And then the third reason was when he, when matter was brought to the city council, he read a lengthy, prepared state statement during the council meeting explaining his opposition to the CUP. And the Court of Appeal concluded that that council member had demonstrated an unacceptable probability of bias and therefore it required that council members recusal. So trying to square these more recent cases with the the older cases is is not an easy task. And it is not a real clear line that divides what constitutes an unacceptable probability of bias and what isn't. I think in light of those more recent cases, you know, statements by a council member or a planning commissioner regarding a matter that's presently before them or about to come before them, that could form the claim, the basis for a bias claim. And as a general rule, should be avoided if at all possible. Statements, you know, at public statements like that by someone who's about to consider that matter, you know, could be seen very differently from other types of prehearing statements if it's specific to that project. I think the key thing is, can your, the key question is whether or not your statements or or your actions could be characterized as advocacy either for a project or against a project. So if you take an advocacy position on a particular project as opposed to advocacy of of general public policies, that might be seen as as an instance of prejudging an issue as opposed to trying to keep an open mind on an issue. And and that clearly what happened in that Nasha case and in the Newport Beach case. So I just want everyone to just keep in mind that that you need, if you're going to be, it's okay to make statements generally about issues that are important to you, that that you see as important to the city. You have to try and avoid taking an advocacy position on a particular project.
Not to interrupt this too much, Steve. Do you have the site on that Nasha case?
I do.
Thank you.
Hey, rub it in, that was one of my cases.
Really?
Well, I was the supervising attorney, so hey.
I, you know, just, I found it, the Court of Appeal decision a little troubling because I don't think it really explained why there was bias in that case. And it almost kind of took it away from the the prior cases, Stubblefield and and Fairfield, which I thought were very clear statements that you can make statements and it doesn't necessarily rise to this level of of bias.
They cited, of course, Stubblefield.
And 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 Nasha doesn't really even address those cases. And then Woody's Warf kind of picks up on Nasha. Nasha is 125 Cal App Fourth, 470.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want the the Newport Beach case.
No, I just wanted that one. And thank you very much and sorry for interrupting.
That's quite all right. And we also have a bullet point here, equal treatment of similar similarly situated properties. And that's a basic fairness requirement that also kind of blends into an equal protection issue. And and just keep in mind that, yes, generally, that's the 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 rule. But there are going to be instances in which properties can be treated differently. And so long as you're not falling into one of those protected categories, which in most cases, the planning commission, you're not going to deal with that. You're just going to be dealing with different housing projects. As long as there's a rational basis for your decision making, you you can treat certain properties differently, even though there might be some similarities. It's just something to keep in mind as you're going through that decision making process. Next slide, please. So these are the recent enactments that we'll talk about tonight. These are the key pieces of legislation that were intended to address California's housing crisis, but that also have substantially impacted the work that you do as a planning commission, the work that the planning staff does and the work that the city council does. Next slide. So just as an overview, there are certain trends and definitions that you'll see throughout those various laws. And these trends really can be summed up as less local control, more residential development, higher density and faster processing of permits. And that seems to apply across the board for those those pieces of housing legislation that I just identified. Another trend is the increase in the burden of proof when it comes to certain findings related to housing development. So the state, in particular in the Housing Accountability Act, is making it harder and harder for cities to deny certain projects. And it's requiring more proof to justify any denial decision. So we mentioned a moment ago that the general standard is substantial evidence. But in some instances, your findings are going to have to be supported by a preponderance of the evidence. Next slide, please. So the the Housing Accountability Act is one of the the key pieces of legislation we're dealing with. And this was actually adopted in 1982. So it's been somewhat of a sleeping giant since then. So as originally enacted and is still true, generally true today, the Housing Accountability Act provides that when a proposed housing development complies with applicable general plan zoning and development policies, the local agency may disapprove that project or prove it on a condition be developed at a lower density only if the local agency finds that the project would have a specific adverse and unavoidable impact on public health or safety. So after it was enacted in 82, there were subsequent amendments. One of them added the word objective to applicable general plan zoning and development policy. So it had to comply, if it complied with objective policies, then you could only deny it if it would have a specific adverse and unavoidable impact. The more recent 2017 amendments are the ones you probably have heard about. And those are the ones that are of concern to us and they drastically altered the landscape for for planning staff. In 2017, the legislature added a provision requiring that applicant receive timely written notice and an explanation if an agency considers a proposed housing development inconsistent with those applicable objective standards. So generally speaking, it has to be done within 30 days. The 2017 amendments heightened fines for bad faith disapproval of a project. They increased the burden of proof, as I mentioned, for a finding of adverse effect on public health or safety. So the local agency must now justify a decision that there is an adverse impact on public health or safety by a preponderance of the evidence rather than substantial evidence. And then also, very importantly, the 2017 amendment provides that for purposes of this section, a housing development project shall be deemed consistent, compliant and inconformity with an applicable plan, program, policy, ordinance, standard requirement or other similar provision. If there is substantial evidence that would allow a reasonable person to conclude that the housing development project is consistent, compliant and inconformity. So it almost flips that standard upside down and allows someone else to say, hey, I think there's substantial evidence. And a reasonable person would think there's substantial evidence to conclude that this project's consistent and in compliant and in conformance with applicable standards. Therefore, can't deny it unless you find that specific adverse impact by a preponderance of the evidence. So you can see how they're playing around with the different burdens and then allowing this this particular standard to apply makes it all the more difficult for cities and counties to to deny a housing development project.
Steve, I had a quick question.
Sure.
I went to a training, I don't know, a year ago that the city provided. And we were told at that, that basically the definition of a housing development under most of this legislation was two or more units. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe so. And I, you know, since we're talking about multiple acts, I would go back and and look at it with respect to each of those acts, but I believe that's correct.
So if if somebody's just proposing to build a house that doesn't qualify, what if somebody's going to do a house with an ADU in the same application? Is that now considered a housing development and design review becomes off the table?
Yeah, and that that could implicate the Housing Accountability Act.
Interesting. Scary.
But it's making it tougher. It's making it tougher. Next slide, please. So the Housing Crisis Act is another enactment. This one prohibits conducting more than five hearings, including appeals on a housing project if it complies with the objective requirements at the time of application. So once it's determined that it it is a complete application, then there is a limit, outer limit on the number of hearings that can be held for that particular project. This was enacted ostensibly to jumpstart more housing production by accelerating the approval process for housing projects and by curtailing local government's ability to downzone or to it also limits fee increases on housing applications and and other implementing accountability provisions. Next slide, please. So the density bonus law in California, that was originally enacted in the late 70s. It gives housing and mixed use developments with five or more homes a right to increased density beyond applicable limits in exchange for providing homes at below market rate rent or costs. So currently, the density bonus law mandates that a developer is entitled to certain benefits if it agrees to a certain percentage of affordable housing units in a project. So under current law, density bonus to allow for additional units up to 50% above the maximum under the zoning laws. There are certain incentives or concessions to reduce applicable development standards, including height limitations and setbacks, other zoning code and architectural design requirements. It provides for waivers or reductions of any development standards that physically preclude construction of the project as designed. And then it also provides for significantly reduced parking ratios. So under under the density bonus law, a local agency may not deny a requested incentive or concession unless it makes, again, a written finding based on substantial evidence that one, there's no identifiable or actual cost reductions. Number two, that there would be a specific adverse impact on public health and safety or on a historic resource. Or three, the concession or incentive would be contrary to state or federal law. So those would be the the findings you'd have to make. And again, you have to make those based on substantial evidence. Otherwise, you would not be able to deny a requested incentive or concession. Next slide. So Senate Bill 35, I'm sure is another one that you you've heard about and and taken a look at. This was enacted in 2017. It was effective January 1st, 2018. It provides a streamlined ministerial approval project, a ministerial approval process for projects for qualified residential developments in urbanized setting where the local government local government has not issued enough building permits to meet the RENA numbers in all income categories. So if the project meets multiple criteria involving project specific, site specific, applicant specific criteria, then it shall be ministerially approved and is not subject to any otherwise applicable CUP requirements. So again, the 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 result of this is it's it's basically cutting the CUP process out of the loop and again, implementing an expedited review process. So I guess again, what this is highlighting is when we are confronted with projects that fall under one of these enactments, the Housing Accountability Act, SB 35, density bonus law, then when we make those findings, we're going to have to really be mindful that we have to have substantial evidence or in some cases even a higher standard preponderance of the evidence. And then again, it has to bridge that analytical gap, as the court said, that it has to be able to draw a line from the raw evidence to the ultimate finding. And so that's why it's important in those situations that we kind of keep those standards in mind ahead of time as we're reviewing the projects. And then as you're considering them, important to keep that in mind as well. And that way we can make those written findings that will, if if appropriate in any particular case, will withstand judicial scrutiny or or some type of judicial challenge. withstand judicial scrutiny or, or some type of judicial challenge. So that is the final slide that we've got here and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
How much of the recent legislation, SB nine, is up for challenge, if you will, in, in November?
So I understood there might be some initiatives that are, are taking aim at, at SB nine. And I would have to take a look at that and I can report back at a future meeting on what the status of those initiatives are.
Great, thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Because I waited till the end, like the slide said. First of all, well done. It really took me back, bridged the analytic gap. Oh my God. I just, I, I wish I had a nickel for every time I, I heard that one. That's just so, so thank you for that. But, but a couple of things that are different from my day, don't you love it? That would be in my day. But going back to, to the bias issue and, and whether we recuse ourselves. I always advise people to say on the record why they were recusing themselves, but that's not required.
Well, it may not be required, but I think it probably is good practice to do that.
Okay, because I noticed we haven't been doing that. I, I know when I've accused myself, I've said why, because it's generally been, to your point, the 500 foot, that's, you know, the, the, my house is too close. So it's been a pretty easy thing to say. But I personally think that's good practice. So just something throw out there.
And if anyone has any questions about what they, what they should say or how to approach the, the topic, you know, feel free to reach out to Sidro and to myself and we'll, we'll walk you through that.
Second, just my humble opinion and hey, I was on the losing side in Nasha as the supervising attorney, so what do I know? But I just think we talk about a, a house and an ADU. The ADU is not before us. The city has to approve it. On the other hand, a house that comes before us is coming before us for discretionary approval because of, of facts that lead it to need discretionary approval. So I would fight the argument that it is considered two or more until some case tells us otherwise. That's just, that's just my very humble opinion. But third and most important, and what I really want to ask you about, and tonight really brought it home for me. And I've been thinking about this a lot, because of these new standards, we rely a lot, as you know, on the compatibility finding. And when you look at what the, the law is saying, and I'm assuming the case is either have or will interpret the law, we do need these objective standards. So is there any guidance that you can provide that, I mean, if you think we're doing it fine, great. But if there's a better way that we can, something we can look at that really would be considered objective standards, I for one would appreciate that.
And that's something that I'll be talking with staff about and maybe we'll come back at a future meeting. We can talk a little further about, about that. I think in the context of the meeting tonight, we weren't really dealing with any of the recent legislation. So we weren't concerned with any higher standard or, or having to, to deal with those objective standards. You had more discretion in this context than you might in a situation where a, for example, a Housing Accountability Act project is before you. And, and that'd be something just to keep in mind. And, and I think as those projects come forward, I think what our, our, my objective and, and I know Sidro's objective will be is to just lay out the groundwork for your decision-making process at the beginning of the meeting and that will provide the framework going forward. So I think that might answer your concern about, you know, when you're having to make a certain finding, you know, how, just to make sure that you are again bridging that analytical gap.
That's very helpful. Thank you. That's it.
Any other questions? As always, I'm, I'm available and you can get my email address. If you don't have it, you can reach out to Sidro and, and Camelia and they can provide you my email and, and phone number. We can discuss any particular question you've got about the topics we raised tonight or, or anything else related to the planning commission.
Thank you. Um, well, with that, in terms of our agenda, we have one more opportunity for public comments. If there is anybody out there that wants to make a public comment.
Any chance for a question for staff?
I assume so.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I'm just curious about, you know, I, I really like that we're having this director's report. I was just wondering if there's any way we can propose suggested items to sort of discuss or address as a group, either in the context of that report or what I'm thinking of is there were a lot of issues that were brought up tonight about what are documents that are required for the applicant to provide to us and not. And I, I think it would be helpful for us to sort of create a mutual understanding about what's sort of the bare minimum that we're willing to accept. And I know that applicants sometimes will insist on going to a meeting, you know, if they don't provide everything. I'm curious as to what our criteria are for pushing back or staff's criteria for pushing back on that and when they can and can't do that. And then secondly, we were going to be getting some follow-up on cases that we've, we've decided on and whether they go to City Council and get appealed and what the outcomes of that are. I was just curious, can we provide projects that we are curious about what happened to them? I know sometimes they're in, involved in, in legal disputes, so you can't necessarily disclose information. But if there's no restrictions, can we get suggestions on, can we suggest projects that we'd like to know what the ultimate outcome was?
Sure. I, and, and listening to the request, I, I think there is some, my intent for this, this director's report was to advise the commission on cases perhaps that have been denied and, and have been that have been a, appealed to City Council. Since Camelia and I have been at, at, at the city, we, we haven't had an application where a planning commission denial has gone to City Council at this time. If, if there are cases where, you know, that preceded us and you would want to know that you would want to know the, the outcome. I, I think there is a, a way we can do that. I also want to be cognizant of the legalities of certain things. And so, so I can, I can get together, staff can get together with Steve. We can see if we can find a path in which we can have this dialogue. Also, just to remind the commission, the City Council is the only body that can mandate staff on any work plan. But obviously in terms of informational items, planning commission is more than welcome to, to our staff. Perhaps it's maybe through the chair and vice chair as a conduit. But let me, let me, let, let us work with, with the city attorney and we'll find a, a path in which we can we can provide some information in the director's report.
And I'm very sensitive to the fact that I know you guys are at maximum capacity. So I, I certainly know it doesn't have to be something that happens right away or, or anything like that, but I don't want you to stress out over.
No, and, and I think, you know, obviously like, you know, if there was an appeal, we will let you know right away, you know, we got an appeal. And in fact, I just remembering something right now, I believe, committee, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we received an appeal of a DRC decision that will eventually come before planning commission. I don't have the address for that, but I, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that was submitted today. So at some point it will come your way and obviously we'll, we'll notify you of that appropriately. But obviously the idea for this director report is to provide you with information
Okay.
to the extent possible.
Thank you.
Well, unless there are any further comments, I just want to end this by saying again, welcome to alternate Commissioner Chow. And I hope that it met your expectations. Sorry, I'm hearing an echo. Which is why I'm talking oddly, but anyway, I hope it met your expectations and that you enjoyed, for lack of better words, your first meeting. And unless there are no objections, I will call this meeting adjourned.
Great. So long. Good night, everybody.